Yeah.
Alright, everybody, we're gonna start here. Good evening, everyone. We'll call this city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Sandal.
Here.
Mayor Gotel.
Here. Is there anyone for the open forum? Seeing no one, I'd ask everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to ask for the approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of July 23rd, 2013, and the regular city council meeting of July 23rd, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Tonight, we have some presentations. First, we have Lisa from Bloomington Public Health regarding the public health emergency preparedness heat plan. We had a memo on that, so I'm sure there's gonna be a fabulous presentation here.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Gotel and members of Richfield City Council. Thanks for inviting me today to speak about extreme heat events and some of the work that Bloomington Public Health is doing. And hopefully all, there we go. There's really been three recent significant climate trends in Minnesota that have led to some of the extreme heat that we're seeing. The average temperature is increasing, the average number of days with high dew points are increasing, and our precipitation is changing. And this really has led to some extreme heat events that have some significant health impacts. And while we all know it's hot, it really is extremely hot. Heat is a very serious issue in the United States. And from 1979 to 2003, more people have actually died in America from extreme heats than floods, hurricanes, lightning, tornado, and earthquakes combined. So these patterns of heat can have some significant health impacts aside from health, illness, and death. The water quantity and quality changes. We have increases in air pollution, which leads to other health-related illnesses, including asthma and allergies. We see a lot more vectors and vector-borne illnesses, mosquitoes, tics, which lead to Lyme disease, West Nile virus, encephalitis. And typically, vulnerable populations are disproportionately affected by extreme heat. So last year, we started our response and developing some heat response strategies, including developing a heat annex to our emergency response plan, which included really defining what exactly public health would do in these situations, identifying who may be at risk. And we did some pre-summer awareness messages, as well as developing strategies of what we do to prevent any morbidity and mortality related to heat. And we also evaluated and updated our plan every time there was a heat event. So our plan really was based on the science of the time that we knew. And we took a look at the average number of deaths and heat-related, specifically heat-related deaths in the United States from 1979 to 1977, which is the chart that you see here. And as you can see, the disproportionate number of individuals between the ages of 55 to 85 that are affected, as well as the inset, you'll see zero to four is also at high risk for heat-related illness and deaths. So we did a mapping project in Bloomington and Diner, Richfield, based on that data. And we specifically looked at the percentages of seniors, the percentages of children, zero to five, and mapped them out within the three cities, as well as we took a look at where are all the residential buildings that have access to central air conditioning. And we did some overlaying of maps, and I'll show you Richfield. This is a map of children less than five living in poverty compared to the percentages of residential housing with central air. So the darker the blue, the higher the number of children living in poverty in this particular map. So for example, in your southwest corner, you'll see that 81% of these individuals have access to central air conditioning, and there's a very large population of children living in, less than five, living in poverty. And the dark blue is greater than about 23%, up to 70%. And the second lighter blue in the middle quadrant, in the center, is 16.5% to 22.5%. So with these maps, we can really target some of our messages and messaging. And if there is an event where we'd have limited resources, we may send, for example, the CERT team door-to-door to see if everybody's okay in the area that has a high percentage of children with less access to central air. In this next map, we mapped out individuals over the age of 65, living alone, which is also puts them at higher risk for adverse reaction to heat and access to services, and the percentages of residential buildings with central air. So as you can see, the same quadrant actually has a large number of seniors, less access to air conditioning. Some of the other things that we mapped out is we mapped out all of the public cooling spaces throughout the three cities. And I can provide these maps in a larger format if you needed. But that also, we kind of look at, do they have access, if there is no transportation, can they access those specific locations in your city that have ability to keep them cool in case their air conditioner wasn't working or they didn't have air conditioning? So what we would do with that information is if we had to provide transportation, we would go to the farther areas of the city, areas that have higher poverty, less access, and possibly provide them with transportation to some of these cooling centers. So with this information, we had our 2012 extreme heat event. For those that remember, it was right around the Fourth of July. And the whole month, we really had 30 days of temperatures in the high 90s. Temperatures exceeded over 100 degrees right around the Fourth of July, and is actually the third hottest summer in Twin Cities history. We had a lot of people outside celebrating the Fourth of July. Being outside is a risk factor. There was alcohol involved, also a risk factor. So we were quite concerned about what might happen during the Fourth of July celebrations. And some of our response strategies included partnering with public safety, and we mass-dispensed water, little bottles of water, and made water available for people to fill their water bottles during the Fourth of July activities, both at the Bloomington Summer Fete and the Richfield Parade. We mobilized CERT to assist in the response as well. We did just-in-time training for heat-related illness and provided them with water so they can disseminate it. And we also contacted all of our pre-identified shelter sites to assess capacity to operate as cooling centers in case it was needed, provided education and information, and really identified gaps in our planning. And two gaps really came out of this event that we noticed. One was if there was a power outage, although our shelters had backup generators, their generators were not attached to their air conditioner. They were attached to their heat because cold temperatures has been an issue in Minnesota and in our area. But air conditioning, the absolute necessity of air conditioning was not. So many of our sites that we had pre-identified as shelters could not actually operate as cooling shelters. And I'll talk about the other gap in a minute. I just wanted to show you, we also did a lot of messaging. It was posted on your Facebook. This is from your Facebook page from July 3rd of 2012. Within those shelters that we did identify, we posted where they could go in case of extreme heat, if they needed to cool off and didn't have access to it, and that was on your Facebook page. But the other gap in planning is even though this is the same map before, even though this is the average annual rate for heat-related deaths, what we saw during the 2012 heat was it was the 15 to 34-year-olds that were showing up at the hospital with heat-related illness. And that was quite a surprise. That was not part of our plan, unfortunately. But what we are now, since then, have done is really mapped out those that are 15 to 34-year-olds and where the residential houses are in the central area. They become a new target group. And we did identify that those that were at risk and that were showing up were those who were involved in youth athletics, outdoor youth athletics, and also outdoor workers. So we've really been working on some targeted messages, letting employers know, and also schools, just messages about heat and stay cool. This is recent. On July 16th, we had some extreme heat. This was just a recent health advisory that we posted on all of the webpages and through our e-subscribe, just to take precautions in case of heat, stay out of the hot weather. We did some how to be safe in hot weather, and also posted again a list of air-conditioned spaces and cooling centers throughout Hennepin County. So that's really what I had to talk about related to heat. If they have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can I just say that I think it's the program to go door-to-door in some terms at times to do that? Because if you look at a poverty issue as well, a lot of those people then don't have access to the list because they don't have a computer or the internet.
Right.
So, you know, and for us to have the ability for them to also to call the city and be able to get this, I'm sure through our public health administration, lists like that, too, that's very, very helpful. So thanks.
And we would also probably partner with Neighborhood Watch as well in those types of events.
Okay. No, this is, although we've had a nice, cool year this year, that doesn't mean that we still won't have some 90 and 100 degree weather yet. Council, any other comments or questions? Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. We have council discussion. And before I forget on the council discussion, I wanted to bring up the item about the August, you know, our second August meeting is canceled. It usually is, that's for vacation time. But it also always happens that we have to also have a budget meeting at that time, right, you know, days afterwards. So I already have talked to city staff about the possibility of moving it to, we would cancel the first August meeting and keep the second meeting, and then have the budget meeting the day after. So we would always know where it is, and we could always program for it. I don't know how council feels about that, but I thought it might be easier on everybody else's schedule to do it that way. But I'd like to hear from council.
My only comment is I think part of the reason that the end of August was canceled is I think it was staff and so forth doing family vacations, and that was my understanding, but maybe not. I don't know.
You know, that might have been originally when it was put together by a former city manager. But we don't have any particular, there's no affinity to having that particular meeting canceled as opposed to the first meeting. And it seems like we're always stuck in the same position. If the whole idea was to make sure that there was an open week so that, you know, there wasn't a council meeting and people could take vacation, it's sort of a self-defeating purpose when on the very same week, you've got to be here for a budget meeting. So it sort of just defeats itself.
I guess the other question, if I can ask, I know for the, part of the problem with the budget is getting the numbers from the state and figuring out when we, and then we have timelines that we have to reach decisions. Maybe you can tell us, Mr. DeVage, where we are in that range.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. What you're dealing with is certainly the, a lot of the revenue data doesn't get to us until sometimes in mid or towards the end of August. And so, you know, we try to hold off on our budget process because probably unlike a lot of other cities, we do an entire full budget so that when we are, when we are by charter supposed to turn over a budget to you at a special meeting, on or before, I think it's the first of September or Labor Day or something like that, we have an entire budget put together. So again, we generally don't have data available to be able to provide a budget to you sooner than, gosh, probably the 15th or 18th or so of the month. And we have to have something certified by the 15th of the month to the county. So it's always got to happen at a council, either the first council meeting of September that you actually certify the preliminary levy, or you would have to hold a special city council meeting. You know, several years ago, what we used to do is in that very, typically the very first week of September, is when on a Wednesday night, we would have the budget meeting, and then the following week or so, typically the following week, we'd have the council meeting and then adopt the preliminary levy. But, you know, for schedules and scheduling of council members' vacations, that hasn't worked out lately. And so we ended up, we've ended up now the last couple of years, doing it that last week of August. So again, I think if you're gonna cancel a meeting to have freedom to take a vacation, you're probably a lot better off canceling the first one, and then just plan on the fact that when you have that second council meeting in August, you know you're gonna have the budget document. You will have had it for about a week, and you know that sometime within the next several days after that, maybe up to seven days, sometime within seven days, you'll have to have another meeting anyway to go over the budget.
Councilmembers, what do you think?
I think that will work.
Will work. Will work?
Given enough advance notice, I can make anything work.
Okay. No, great. Okay.
That's fine.
Let's try it. You know, if we don't like it, we can always switch it back.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Good input. Councilmember Elliott?
Yes, ma'am. Couple things. Attended the last meeting or the last planning meeting for Open Streets, which occurs on September 15th. And if Tom would be so kind, let's throw this up there. It's been up a couple times, but once again, this is the new poster for the Open Streets, which is scheduled for September 15th. New and improved, larger groups, a lot of the same fun. Some interesting things, I think we talked about six months ago about the flea market and some of the other added benefits. The 5K run has, I think at last count, 60 to 70 participants already.
Oh, wow. That's great.
And it expects to grow. The BMX bikes are gonna be there. I don't see, yeah, Jim Topitz offers here, and he was telling us at the meeting that they have a vegetable kebab that's gonna be offered that is gonna generate not only a lot of good eating, but a lot of funds to moving towards funding Open Streets next year. So it's moving in the right direction. I really like to see this turned into an annual event for the city of Richfield and for the Penn Avenue Commercial District that is going to be onward and upward. The second thing is really something I find extremely interesting and a long-term benefit to the community. On July 23rd, the Richfield Human Rights Commission had a community conversation. What that was, was an invitation to a lot of the newer residents in the community to come in and discuss what this community is from long-term residents' perception, what it is to the new-term residents, and where we may differ in what we see or how we feel about our community. And it was, the chair of the Human Rights Commission said it was exciting, given the turnout. I think 17 to 20 people, a lot of dialogue, a lot of exchange of ideas. And more importantly, they put out notes, about five pages of some of the points that were raised, some of the comments. And there's an indication that they're going to try to continue the conversations in the community on a regular basis, expand the exposure, and continue the dialogue so that any misconceptions or faulty perceptions some of us have, whether you're old residents or new, we can find some middle ground and really turn it into a solid, unified community. I'm not gonna go through the whole thing. I'm hoping, and I don't know if I have to check with the city attorney or not, I'm hoping the city manager can take a quick look at the notes that arose out of that, and if appropriate, put them on the city's webpage so people can go take a look and see what some of the comments were, what some of the positives were, and some of the things that the newer community residents believe we have to work on. I'm just gonna highlight, they started with large-group discussions and broke down. And needless to say, anytime you break down to the larger groups, it expands out from where you start. But I thought the large-group discussion items were great. They broke down into nice parks, smiles, acknowledgement, friendly neighbors, tolerance, hospitality, equal opportunity, respect for differences, familiarity, welcome packet for new residents in the community, accept people for who they are, respectful police, and student support from schools. Those are the large-group discussions, and they broadened out from there. And I found it extremely interesting and heartening what the comments were. Some negative, but those are the things we have to work on. But I'd ask everybody, if it gets on the webpage, take a look at it, see what the community is saying, both old and new residents, and involve yourself in this community discussion because it can only make us better. Thank you.
They should publicize that more. I think there'd be a lot more people come.
Yeah, absolutely.
Councilmember Garcia?
Well, I just wanted to talk about National Night Out, which is, what is it now, unity in the community?
Night unity.
Right. And the mayor and I went to a noon out at Main Street, which is on 76th and Lindell. And that was a lot of fun because they closed the parking lot, and it was food and bingo, and it just, it was, and ice cream and hot dogs and...
But they heard we were there and the police showed up.
Yes, I know. Which was really great. It's always good to see police personnel, you know, visiting with the public. I think it adds value to their, you know, to the whole event. And that was a lot of fun. And then at night, before we had our storm, I was paired up with a young man, a police explorer, and he was just, I mean, he was really well-received. There were a lot of kids, and they wanted to talk to him, and they wanted information. And it was just, he was very helpful because I had him share some of the trivia and pass out some information. So that was a lot of fun. It was, the folks were, you know, very welcoming and had a lot of questions. I also went to some of the events, night out events, that were not official. I mean, they weren't part of the Neighborhood Crime Watch. But, you know, I mean, that's what really, you want neighbors to get together. You want them to care about each other and look out after each other. And I think that, so I did stop at about three of them. And it was great, great fun. And I appreciate that we had a lot of the police and fire personnel out there, too, because that makes a big difference.
Councilmember Sandal?
You know, I don't know. There must be something about the ladies on the council because the police showed up at my block party, too. I don't know. I have a couple different things. One, just some announcements for people who are looking for things to do this weekend. Coming up on Saturday, August 17th, St. Peter's is celebrating their annual pig roast. And that will run from 5:30 to 10:00 p.m. They will have a dance, and Divine Swine, I think, is doing their pig roast. So that'll be a fun event. And then Sunday, if that wasn't enough for you and you're not tired of dancing, Assumption Church is having their fun fiesta. And that starts at nine in the morning, runs through 7:00 p.m. at night. So those are both fun events, both have dances and food and lots of good entertainment going on.
So you don't have to cook this weekend?
No, you don't.
And you don't have to be Catholic either to attend.
And then I'm gonna go talk about something I did yesterday. Hang on.
There you go.
You can make the houses a little bit bigger.
That would be good. Whoops, I can't move it, though. There we go. All right. I went on yesterday's HRA and Planning Commission bike tour in Richfield to look at some of the Richfield rediscovered homes. And so we went to, I think, six different homes. And the one on the top is the before picture, and the one below is the after picture. And it was such a dramatic before and after. I thought I should like to share that with people at home. And the difference in the value is dramatic as well, that what the city is gaining by buying small lots with tiny houses, tearing down the house and building new ones. So they're pretty dramatic. Here's the next one. Little house on top, had 748 square feet. And the house down below has 1,600 square feet. So we're adding the amenities that people like, the new houses, double, in some cases even triple garages, family rooms, and more bedrooms. Here's another one. This is on Second Avenue. It was originally 900 square feet on top, and the one below is 1,870 square feet. Here's another one. This one is dramatic. The house up above had 720 square feet. The house in the lower one, the new house, has 2,600 square feet. So dramatic difference in what it does to your community. Because in one of the places we went, because the house was so dramatic, and I think it's one of the later ones.
It's that one on Logan you just showed.
Yeah. The next door, they built, a developer bought a smaller house and raised the roof and made it two stories because now it fits in the neighborhood with his larger home. And this is the last one on Humboldt that we stopped at. The house before was 782 square feet. This one is 3,270 square feet. This was the seven-bedroom home that we approved, if you remember. So anyway, so it was very dramatic. It was very interesting to see it at street level when you had time to stop and actually take a look and see what it does to the neighborhood. So this is Richfield's, Richfield rediscovered program. We still have some lots. If people are interested in buying a lot and building a brand-new house. And it's been done and done very well. So I wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thanks. That was great. Is that all? So, or did you, Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of items. I want to thank the Urban Marathon Committee. It was awesome. I don't know how you ordered the weather. Perfect weather. And I don't know if Jim can nod his head. Did that guy set a record that this runner, this, yeah, everybody's nodding their head. That's the first time I had trouble staying ahead of somebody on a motorcycle. This gentleman, he had to been at the end of the race at least a half mile in front of everybody else. And it was just amazing. I want to thank Sergeant Matt Steen, who assisted me because as we were going, I jumped over a curb, knocked my kickstand off. And I don't know if anybody noticed, but I started with one motorcycle and ended up with a different one. Thank God I live in a city, so we transferred, but Matt took over for me. The other thing I wanted to report, I actually attended a different council meeting in Hastings on Monday. But the joyous event is there's another Officer Fitz Henry in the family. My daughter was sworn in as a police officer in the city of Hastings. And one thing I noted, other than the big event of pinning the badge on my daughter, is what I appreciate we do in Richfield, we say the Pledge of Allegiance, and they didn't. And my whole family was taken aback, saying, "How come they don't do it?" So I want to commend everybody here that we started a meeting off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yeah. Well, congratulations on your...
Thank you.
You know, Mayor, being that he brought that up, that Pledge of Allegiance was instituted by former Mayor Don Preby way back in the 80s, mid-'80s.
Oh, wow. That's wonderful. I just wanted to make a quick note to everybody that tonight is the first night that this city council meeting is actually streaming live. So it's not a recording that you stream. We actually are streaming live, online, so people can watch in real time. So that's a really neat thing. And that's what we could do with the new technology and stuff that we were able to put into this building. Thank you, city manager. Bring Matt's attention. Tonight, we have a council agenda here. I am making one caveat to approve the agenda as it is, except for removing of item seven. This item is being removed because they're not quite ready with all the paperwork and everything for the approval of the adult daycare servicing center. I move approval?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Post. The agenda is approved, and I'll go to city manager for the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. The consent calendar contains several separate items.
The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on these items will be necessary. Tonight, we have about a dozen items on the consent calendar, and we start off with item A, which is consideration of approval of canceling the public hearing regarding a revised plat for the area at the northwest corner of Sixty-Sixth Street and Richfield Parkway. Item B is consideration of approval of continuing the public hearing regarding a resolution authorizing the city of Richfield to seek a $200,000 Minnesota investment fund loan from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development to assist the Solera Corporation in locating in Richfield. Item C is consideration of approval of the resolutions pertaining to the annual Lindell-Hub Nicollet, or LHN, maintenance assessment process, and scheduling a public hearing for September tenth, 2013. Item D is consideration of approval of the resolutions pertaining to the annual Seventy-Seven Street Maintenance District Assessment Process and scheduling a public hearing for September tenth, 2013. Item E is consideration of approval of the resolution declaring the cost to be assessed for the removal of diseased trees from private property for work ordered in 2012, and scheduling a public hearing for September tenth, 2013. Item F is consideration of approval of the purchase of a Toro Grounds Master 5900 mower for use by the Park Maintenance Division from MTI Distributing for $81,660.44 plus tax. Item G is consideration of approval of the agreement with JBB Properties LLC relating to the annual inspection and maintenance of the sump pump manhole at 866th Street West. Item H is consideration of approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of Assumption, 305 East Seventy-7th Street, for their annual fun fiesta on August eighteenth, 2013. Item I is consideration of approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Church of St. Peter at 6730 Nicollet Avenue for their annual pig roast event on August seventeenth, 2013. Item J is consideration of approval of a request to purchase records management system software from Logis for the police department. Item K is consideration of approval of a resolution accepting a donation for two police canine safety vests from vested interests in Canines Incorporated. And finally, item L, consideration of approval of the first reading of an ordinance amending section 840 of the Code of Ordinances relating to the sale and consumption of beer in public parks, and scheduling a second reading for August twenty-eighth, 2013. And I just want to clarify, that happens to be the night of that special meeting for the budget, so it'll be the budget and the second reading on this one item, and that's being done to be able to enable this ordinance to take effect for the Minnesota Magicians for their hockey season.
Okay.
And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to comment that somebody's already asked me whether we're getting the canine vests. So people already know about these, and they care about the dogs, and they love the fact that we have police dogs out here. So that's kind of cool. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Councilmember Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. This item involves the first reading of an ordinance relating to streetlight banners allowing Penn Central of Richfield to move forward with a decorative banner permit application following the first reading of the ordinance with issuance of the permit following the second reading of the ordinance. Public Works Department is proposing a streetlight banner ordinance to the city code as a new section 855. This ordinance would allow decorative and event-oriented streetlight banners within public rights of way to aid in the promotion of the city and the community. The purpose of this ordinance is to regulate the placement, type, appearance, and servicing of banners within public rights of way. City staff is also requesting approval for Penn Central to move forward with a decorative banner permit application following the first reading of the ordinance with issuance of the permit following the second reading of the ordinance on September second, 2013. This would allow for the installation of banners in time for Penn Fest, which is scheduled for September fifteenth, 2013. A little bit of background, in April of 2013, Penn Central of Richfield asked the city if they could install banners on the city's streetlights with the goal of having them installed in time for open streets at Penn Fest. Because this was the first external request for streetlight banners, city staff, with the direction of the city council, created an ordinance. On June twentieth, city staff held a work session with council members to receive further guidance. At this work session, Penn Central requested to have advertising on its banners for the various businesses along this corridor. City staff were directed to research the implications of allowing advertising on streetlight banners and to then provide a proposed ordinance. With input from the city attorney, community development, business members, and other city policies, staff is recommending against allowing advertising on its banners, with the exception to this policy being, they could be on event banners where there is a sponsor. In this case, only fifteen percent of the banner may have a sponsorship information. Quick question, I'm assuming when you're talking about a sponsor, you're talking about a sponsor for the entire event, not any individual sponsor that, that may have a location or a site for the, for the event? Is that correct?
Mayor, members of the council, I think a typical example, it would be like for the Fourth of July, when Best Buy sponsors a portion of it, they, their name is on the banner that we have for the Fourth of July, so that's typical.
So it's a monetary...
Yeah.
...piece to the event, okay.
And the memorandum goes on to outline several factors that were taken into consideration arriving at that resolution. In regards to timing issues, if the first reading of the ordinance is approved this evening, and the second reading is approved on September tenth, 2013, the effective date of the ordinance would fall after Penn Fest, which is Sunday, September fifteenth. City staff is therefore recommending that Penn Central be allowed to move forward with their banner application following the first reading of the ordinance with issuance of the permit after the second reading of the ordinance, so that the banners may be installed in time for Penn Fest. And with that being said, and at this time, so we can have some discussion, would move on two parts. Approve the first reading of the attached ordinance related to streetlight banners, and two, approve Penn Central to move forward with a decorative banner permit application following the first reading of the ordinance with issuance of the permit following the second reading of the ordinance.
Second.
You know, one of the things I found very curious is that how many banners are actually out there now that, you know, you kind of brought this to our attention, and where they're at at different locations, and how effective they, they really are for some of the corridors that were, festivals and things are going on, as I've been driving around and drove back and forth between Milwaukee and such, and I started to note those things. We know they're there, but we don't notice them until we have to do something like this.
Yeah, I find it interesting when, when you talk about that and going through very, various areas. I mean, I know just in the last several months, there's a movement involved in Edina naming neighborhoods, and then they're going to be put up banners that, that will have designations for, for Sunnyside and, and things like that. Minneapolis has neighborhood groups that are identified by, by banners and everything. St. Paul's biggest moving, minor political group are neighborhood groups that are all identified by the neighborhoods they live in, and they're all marked by banners and, and signs indicating. So I think this is a nice step in the direction of putting up banners and identifying various geographical locations within the city that people, we're all, we're all, you know, it's, it's the proverbial, "We're all a community," but we are little subsets within that community, and having identification that, that allows you to belong to a neighborhood as well as a city, I think is very beneficial just across the board.
Yeah. Council, any other comments or discussion? Go ahead, Councilmember Sandel.
Having been involved with a South Minneapolis neighborhood group that finally got banners installed at Bloom Lake, Bloomington and Lake Street, I really appreciate the facility and fast work by city staff to get this thing moving, because it took us five years in Minneapolis. So I think April to August is very good. I'm very pleased that we were able to go forward, and I think it's a great idea. I think it's nice to be able to identify a business node, an area in the city. We have Cedar Point on the east side, now we'll have Penn Central on the west side. It may make things go better for the business community and the neighbors. I'm really pleased with it.
Yeah. They identify, especially with the wonderful festival that happens.
And especially now that we have a fire station that will say Penn Central. That's great.
Yeah, I like that too. Okay, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And the next item on the agenda is selection of a 911 dispatch service provider for the city of Richfield. The city is reviewing 911 dispatch service upon the past several months initiated by the potential capital investment of roughly 750,000 needed in the next two years. The analysis and discussion of local dispatching services culminated with the city council decision on July twenty-third, 2013, to discontinue local dispatching and seek an alternative provider. The city must now make the selection to provide for a rapid and orderly transition to the provider selected. Three providers are available in interest in providing dispatch services for the city of Richfield, Hennepin County, the city of Bloomington, and the city of Edina. There are pros and cons for the selection of each of the providers stemming from cost to level of service. However, each of the providers could adequately serve the city of Richfield in that capacity. More thorough comparisons of the three providers have been provided to the city council at study session covering the matter and in city council memo number sixty-four dated July eighteenth, 2013. In addition, the city council has had the opportunity to question the representatives of the three providers in a study session format and visit each of them and their respective facilities. Staff has previously recommended to the city council that the city of Edina be selected for the 911 dispatch provider for the reasons indicated in council memo number sixty-four. Those reasons center around the close operating protocol, close operating protocols of the two cities, especially that of the fire department, which would be virtually seamless. Staff reaffirms that recommendation. However, in the end, the selection of the provider is at the discretion of the city council. Staff will follow the city council's decision and make whatever selection that is made work toward the betterment of Richfield. Once a selection of a provider is made, staff will begin the process of transition and finalizing a contract for service if the city is selected. At this, at this time, we'll, because we need to make a recommendation, and we need to have at least a vote on this, I, I would go ahead and speak up and say that I will follow with staff's recommendation of using the city of Edina as our selected 911 dispatch provider for service reasons and for continued great service with our fire department, and that would be my recommendation, and after the research that we have already provided. Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a tough one. We've had our dispatch center since around 1966. Our community really has grown up with our dispatchers, the same way of, our dispatchers kind of nurtured our community. Trying to find a place that can be like our dispatch center is going to be near impossible. It is impossible, but we have to find something that will work. I can be very appreciative of the dispatchers when I talk to them. Their comment was, and I, I wish I could have the exact quote, but, "Don't worry about us, we're concerned about our officers, our friends, and our community." Really kind of hit home on which way to make this decision. While I feel probably Bloomington would be a better choice, and the concern I have is, Edina currently has Golden Valley, and we thought Golden Valley's going to move, but I'm hearing some rumor that Golden Valley really likes Edina. So that, we may be sharing with Golden Valley on the same channel. We're now into the three communities where I prefer that we would just share it with Bloomington, but I understand the cost involved too. So I, I kind of have to sit on the fence with this, why I'd rather prefer to go to Bloomington, because we do share many interests. Just today, I'm listening to the scanner, and Officer Sir Hatson-Beller was listening to Edina, and they had an officer trying to attempt to make a stop, and all their cars were out of position. And because we listened to each other, Officer Hatson-Beller was able to go assist the Bloomington officer immediately. He didn't want to make this stop, there's something wrong with the car, I don't know what the final results was, but it was very appreciative from them. You could just hear it in their voice thanking us for doing it. We share that a lot. My concern is, if we go to a community that has too many calls or too many agencies, whether that's still going to happen, and that's an integral part of police work. We share a lot what goes on in other communities. If we're listening, we get a heads up when a chase comes through and that. While I think Bloomington is the stronger choice, I did meet with Edina. I was impressed with some of the Edina dispatchers that kind of have some of the same core values our dispatchers do, about knowing who's in the community, about actually looking out for the officers on the road, and really thinking them as a group working together. I could accept your recommendation as Edina, although I would prefer to go to Bloomington. I could accept the Edina recommendation.
Councilmember Sandel?
I would agree with Councilperson Fitz Henry that it's been a very tough decision. I went to, I sat in all of four of the dispatchers, including Richfield, and talked with the dispatchers, heard what was going on, saw what the activity level was. And from also speaking with some of the officers, the police officers, clearly, I think their preference would be Bloomington, because that's closer in connection. We, we share many of the same streets, we're right across the border from the freeway, and chases could very easily go north and south. And I know the fire department is much, has a stronger bond with Edina, so you've got these two conflicting things. On a financial note, my personal opinion is, is that long-term, we may be looking at Hennepin County in four years. I think that's a possibility, in which case, we're going to make the, the move twice. So, so that's a financial thing for me, that are we going to have all of our, all of our procedures and our, spend the money on whatever software that's needed for either location, and then decide in four years or eight years, well, gee, maybe we really should have gone with Hennepin County anyway, and maybe we should, because it's costing us too much. So, so I have very mixed feelings on all of this. I would certainly, I would take staff's recommendation to go with the city of Edina, because I respect their research and, you know, I certainly think they're looking out for what's Richfield's best interests. But I do, I can see the benefits of all three locations.
Yeah, I think we all can. Councilmember Garcia?
Well, I agree too. I think we're not going to get what we really want in any of the, of the choices we have, but it's a close call, and, and I think the thing that hurts more is that Edina is not going to take our dispatchers. And that's, hopefully, that if they do have openings, that they will, between the transition time, that, that they will hire some of our dispatchers. But no one likes to lose jobs, and that's something that weighed in our thoughts and decision. And the other thing I was thinking, with technology changing, the way it's changing from one day to the next, we really don't know what's in store for us. So I look forward to hopefully the day when Hennepin County will afford us, you know, the opportunity to not have as many agencies on the same channel, because I agree with Councilmember Fitz Henry. I think if that were the case, then we would certainly have gone with Hennepin County. The other thing I want to say is, we had, we had so many, so much feedback from people, and one of the things that was always, always underlying from the public was that we have dispatchers that are competent, they're skilled, we have dispatchers that know our people, know our community, and have a relationship with our community. It's, it's, it makes you feel good that we have, you know, dispatchers that we do, because they have the respect of the community, and they are very well appreciated and loved, really. You have done so much for so many people in the community that when, you know, when we do anything with the public, someone always has an anecdotal little story that they share with us. And there's no, there's really no way out of it. It is, it is the type of job that is very people-oriented, and I think when you work with the public, you know, you have a heart, and you, and you can empathize with, with them, and it's, you know, it's very, very apparent, and, and I don't know how we can thank you, but from the bottom of our hearts, you know, you, you know, you have been wonderful, and we have been blessed to have you.
Councilmember Elliott?
I'm, I'm guessing that the sincere comments that are coming from up here...
I'm guessing that the sincere comments that are coming from up here don't alleviate the pain and the sorrow that you ladies all feel, but I have to say that I feel exactly the same way as Edwina and everybody up here on the services that you provided and the benefits you provided to the community. In terms of Bloomington, if Bloomington was the only viable option or the recommendation of the staff, you'd still be operating out of that room, because the cost differential of what Bloomington is offering at that price wouldn't have justified closing our dispatch center. With that being said, Edina and Hennepin County came in with good professional services and have presented the additional options that caused me to vote to close our dispatch center and look elsewhere. I've talked with the police chief and the fire chief in regards to the synergy between the two respective communities that border with us, and neither of them voiced a distinct opinion, but it seemed to me that the consensus was, is that the fire department's affiliation and coordination with Edina was very important to the fire chief, and that's one of the things that led to my decision to follow both staff and the rest of the councils' move towards Edina. And so with that being said, you know, I think the Hennepin County is a professional well-run organization. It's large, and there's a lot of concerns, and I've never been in the car, I've never had to listen to the radio, I've never had to decipher it, and I think there was enough concern voiced that working with a community that may, may, and I say rumors, rumors are just that, rumors, may have three cities as opposed to just two, is a heck of a lot different than a facility or dispatch center that's trying to facilitate twenty or twenty-one communities. So for that reason, Edina's going to get my vote.
Yeah. Well, I just want to, I also want to thank the dispatcher, because I can even have my own anecdotal stories of calling up or when the traffic lights are out or something and having somebody on the other side of that line. But I also want to thank staff, because I know they're also looking out and looking for openings for our dispatch and how we might be able to help them transition from other places, and I know that they're awful, also for those who would be able to retire, they're offering the same package that we did when we had to pull the layoff. So I want to thank staff for stepping up to the plate. We'll do our placement, whatever we can, to make your transition a better transition for you, too. And actually, it's a little bit of sigh of relief that it's coming at a time when the economy's picking up, and I know the cities are hiring dispatch. So I think that there will be jobs for these people, because I know that there's no training for qualified dispatch. You are highly sought after, and I know you don't want to leave here, because this is a great place to work, which you'll probably get paid more even. So, and I know that doesn't make up, because this is what you care about, and this is your life, and it's more about the pay, because if it wasn't, you wouldn't have all been here so long. So I just want to say thank you, and this was, this is probably one of the toughest decisions I think I've had to make as a mayor, you know, except for laying off the people during the downturn in the economy, because it hurts people's jobs, and it matters to all of us. But I want to thank everybody for the input. We got a lot of encouraging emails, one way or another, and that did help, too. And I've talked to several council members about their visits to places, you know, that helped us all learn more, and the staff kept getting information, so thank you very much for all that you did.
If I can, I do have one thing I can add.
Please.
I just went to the Bloomington Dispatch Center last week, a day and a half after the hailstorm, and they were really hit much harder than we were. They had many, many trees down and power outages, and they were running a staff of seven, although they only have five councils, and then they were using some auxiliary ones. But they also indicated they were looking to probably add two more councils in their, in their facility. So whether or not we came, I think that was part of their plan. So I was impressed with all of the dispatch centers that I saw, including our own. So I certainly respect all of the work that they've done, and I'm sure they will do work just as good wherever they do end up.
Yeah, I believe St. Louis Park also has openings. So I do hear that. Any other comments? Staff, I'm sure you have enough direction to move forward. Thank you, thank you very much, and thank you for the audience and the dispatchers, police, fire, we're here tonight, thank you for coming.
Do we need to actually, we need to finalize it?
Yep. So I'll make a motion to select the nine-one-one dispatch service provider and direct the city manager to initiate all necessary documents and our contracts for the transition of our service to Edina, the city of Edina Dispatch. Second. Any other comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item under consideration is to reject a bid submitted for a federal bikeways project. In two thousand eight, the city was awarded a federal grant in the amount of two-thousand-six-hundred correction, two-thousand-six-hundred-nine dollars, I'll get it right, two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand and one-hundred-and-seven dollars for construction of the non-motorized transportation pilot program for the creation of two bike routes within Richfield. After significant public involvement and multiple Transportation Commission recommendations, the selected routes were approved for construction by the city council action on February eighth, two thousand and eleven, and it's on the screen right now. Plans and specifications were prepared by H.R. Green with an engineer's estimate of two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand. Bids for the work performed under city direction were opened on July sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Urban Companies was the only company to submit a bid in the amount of five-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-two-hundred. Due to the high cost and lack of additional funding, staff is recommending the city exercise its right to reject the bid. In order to complete the project in two thousand and thirteen before the grant sunsets, the full grant amount may be applied to the construction of one route. After reviewing route planning documents and comments, staff recommends rebidding the east connection route. This route is currently used by many bicyclists and connects to existing and planned bike routes at Seventy-Sixth Street and Twelfth in Richfield and at Sixty-Second Street and Bloomington Avenue, Minneapolis. I don't know if staff has any comments, but if you wanted to make a comment on this before we go ahead and make the motion?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I obviously left a lot of detail out of that first paragraph, this has been about a five-year process, and so it was disappointing to, the first, actually, the first round of bids last fall, I had zero bidders, and then obviously this with the high bid. The only thing I'll add to what's in the staff report is that we actually completed bicycle counts on Bloomington Avenue, south of Sixty-Sixth Street. They were taken in the first week of August, and it was a Thursday weekday, and we had a hundred, around about a hundred and fifty bicyclists in a day, in one day. So it's about, you know, seven percent of the total vehicle traffic of that roadway, so it's a very significant number of bicyclists on that route, which is obviously one of the main factors that went into our decision to recommend trying to rebid that, at least that one route and get that built.
Question? Yeah. Help me, because I don't recall all of the details. What is going to cost the two-hundred-and-sixty-some-thousand dollars? Paint, obviously, are we putting signage up? What else are we doing?
Well, the majority of the work for both routes was signing and striping of the roadway. On the west route, there was some physical construction of concrete curbing and bituminous path along a noise wall. We did get some feedback from the potential bidders that, you know, as signing and striping companies, it's difficult for them to find subcontractors. They're not in the position to be more like a general contractor. They do their kind of work, and they don't really deal with subcontractors. So we also feel that by postponing that project, so to speak, and only focusing on the east project, where it is just strictly signing and striping, that you may, we may end up with more interest and lower prices. The significant cost, two-hundred-and-sixty, seventy-thousand dollars for signing and striping, majority that comes from, we're using, we're specifying a higher quality, it's called a thermoplastic striping, so they actually melt it into the pavement, or you get, usually you get, you know, six to eight years of quality life on that product, as opposed to just paint where you'd have to do it every year. So in the long-term maintenance end of things, it ends up saving the city money by using these federal funds to do a higher-quality product. We don't have to use our own money to upgrade it every year.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Okay, if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I recommend that we reject the bid submitted for the federal bikeways project and approve the postponement of west connection route construction and rebid east connection route construction only.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Councilmember Sandal, you have the next item.
Thank you, Your Honor. We heard, or we met with several people earlier this evening who were applying for city advisory commissions, and I'd like to nominate the following two persons. Chad Peterson for the term expiring on the Arts Commission on January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and Ahmad Ansari for the term expiring on the Friendship City Commission on January thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
I'll second.
Well, wait a minute, I think you got the name wrong. It's Patterson?
Chad Patterson on the Arts Commission?
You said Peterson.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke if I did. Patterson, correct.
I'll second the motion. I just wanted to say that it's really nice, because we still have some, a few openings on the Arts and Friendship Commission and two youth openings, one on the Human Rights Commission and the Friendship Commission. This is a great resume builder for those of you who are thinking about college or just out of college, this is really great to put on the resume. And we do entertain commission members if we have openings all times of the year, so thank you.
Councilmembers? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Just a couple of quick things. One, tonight is the last night for Tim Bornhold, who's our video production assistant, who sits in the back room back there and does a great job of putting our council broadcasts together. He's been with us for three years, and he has his own business now, and he needs to devote more time to that, so this is it for him. He's the last broadcast, but I wanted to thank him. And the new person working there is Josh Wideren. So Josh will be with us, hopefully for a long while, and do the same kind of a job that Tim did for us. As I was just, as I just stepped out, I wanted to talk to both representatives from Hennepin County and thank them for all the time and effort that they put into this process, and also talk to the folks at Edina who are very excited to hear the news and ready to move forward. And in that vein, I wanted to pass along, and Edina wanted me to let you know that they are looking at picking up some of our dispatchers, or looking at our dispatcher for some openings that they have, so I think it's going to turn out well.
Good. If I can comment, Your Honor? One thing nice about Richfield is we really have a very simple grid system to understand.
Yeah.
Avenues run north and south, streets run east and west.
Right.
And we're square or rectangular. I mean, we don't.
Close part, we have a few little dead-end places.
But very few places that are very unusual in Richfield.
Exactly, and you know, one city dispatching for another is, you know, it does work well for a lot of reasons. In this particular case, you know, this is, this will be the second time Edina's transitioned someone in, so they've been through it before. And I know that Councilmember Fitz Henry will remember, I remember, that for many, many years, the city of Richfield dispatched for the entire city of Eden Prairie. Yeah. For years. So, and that's a much more complicated city to dispatch than Richfield was at the time. That's it.
Okay. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second. Any other further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Seeing no further business, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Well, we did it.